Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It's February 6th. Councilman Austin Maxwell has our prayer and our pledge.
Go bow with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together tonight. We ask that you be with us, each and every council member, to help us make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Murfreesboro. Please watch over our community. Please watch over our first responders, and please be with us in every step in the coming days and weeks. For in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Wouldn't want to make a quick note before we get started. We are working really hard on our 2025 special census. I don't know if we have the...
It's up running on the outside chamber.
All right. We've got it. All the information running, but it's www.murfreesborocensus.com. You can qualify for a $100 gift card by completing the special census. I mean, literally, it takes you a minute, but we are nearing the completion of that, and we would really appreciate it if... All we need to know is what your address is and the people that live in your house. We're not going to show up with like a gift basket or anything like that. It's just, that's all we need to know. We don't... Yeah, it's just the number. We don't need social security. None of your private information. Just, we're trying to get, for every new person we sign up, we get $175 from federal and state shared funds, and it's a big deal to help keeping your taxes low. So if you would, that would be great. All right. With that, I don't think we have any public comment on any agenda items?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move to our consent agenda. You have nine items on your consent agenda. Is there anything that needs to be taken off of the consent agenda?
If not, second.
Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have city council meeting minutes in front of you. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. You have old business. This is the fiscal year 25 budget amendment ordinance, 25006. This is second and final reading. And I think we have a few changes to that area?
Yes, we have one change to the amendment that's noted in your council communication. We're requesting to move an IT position that was budgeted in Waters' budget back over to the general fund budget under the IT department. So that'll increase the city's headcount and increase revenues from Water and increase our payroll expenses. I'd recommend approving these changes before approving the ordinance on second reading.
We need to get an amendment to the proposed ordinance. If someone is okay, would make a motion to amend the ordinance.
Move to amend the ordinance.
Second.
Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll now vote on ordinance 25006 as amended for second and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll move to new business. We have item 12, amending the PRD zoning for property along Veals Road.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Our first public hearing tonight is for an amendment to the Greystone PRD planned residential district zoning. Greystone is located along the north side of Veals Road and along the west side of Double Springs Road. You approved this PRD several years ago, and since then, they've been submitting their plans to the planning commission for approval for the various different elements of the subdivision or of the development, which includes single-family detached lots on individual lots of record, single-family detached homes as part of a horizontal property regime, and townhomes as part of a horizontal property regime. The PRD amendment before you leaves the development largely unchanged, except for one major modification. And that major modification, which warranted the PRD amendment, is to, is for the electric service or the electric infrastructure along Lyons Farm Parkway to be overhead instead of underground. The original PRD pattern book committed to making that electric underground, and the developers have requested to amend the PRD to allow overhead electric and the accompanying landscaping along that Lyons Farm Parkway to be modified so that it would work with the overhead electric. Lyons Farm Parkway is part of our major transportation plan. It is a linkage from, the Erby Lane extension is a way to put it. It's a linkage from southeast Broad Street, Manchester Pike, all the way up to John Bragg Highway. The subdivision to the north, Farmhouse Downs, is constructing the first phase of that, which will be from John Bragg Highway down to the northern boundary of the Greystone Track. And the Greystone developers are constructing that Collector Street from the northern portion of their development, the northern boundary of their development down to Veals Road. So it will, at the present time, when these two developments come to fruition, it will create a linkage from Veals Road up to John Bragg Highway. So the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter on January the 8th and recommended its approval at that time. Mr. Matt Taylor of SEC does not have a formal PowerPoint presentation to give you, but he would like to come to the podium and explain the reason for the developers looking to move that electric infrastructure overhead. Be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley and Matt Taylor of SEC. As Mr. Blomley said, we have proposed this along the, this north-south collector road, Lyons Farm Parkway only there. The rest of the development would stay underground. After we got into construction, MTE come back and said they needed a large transmission line for some more regional type backup here to go north-south. That particular line has some very significant cost with it, and it's very similar to the line that got installed along Fortress Boulevard. When it got realigned, the city chose, because of those costs, to keep that overhead, similar to along Osburn Lane. So along some of our major collectors, we have done this throughout the city, and that's really the driving force. If we'd known about this when we came through with the original PRD, we would have discussed it then. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Taylor? All right. Seeing none, we need to hold a public hearing for this PRD amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium. If you're representing just a group like an HOA, you'll have five minutes. If you're representing just yourself, you'll have three minutes. If you'll keep all of your questions directed towards the council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. All right. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 25OZ02.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll move to item 13. This is rezoning property along Old Last Cassis Road. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next public hearing tonight is for the rezoning of approximately four acres located at the southwestern corner of North Rutherford Boulevard and Old Last Cassis Road. The property is currently zoned CF, Commercial Fringe District, and there is, there are, this is the site of a new commercial subdivision. There's been a site plan already approved for an Aldi grocery store in this area here. We anticipate a gas station here. And the impetus for this rezoning request was that on the, right on the corner, the developer would like to construct a Valvoline Instant Oil Change. It's a motor vehicle service use, and according to our zoning ordinance, a motor vehicle service use is not a permitted use in the CF zoning district. So rather than rezone the development to commercial highway, which would open the door to numerous other more intense uses, we recommended to the applicant that they rezone the property to a PCD, so that way they could move forward with the one intended use, but not open the door to all those additional uses that the CH zone would allow. So the applicant has made the request for a PCD, which specifies the uses that are permitted within this PCD. It also specifies the layout of the, of the motor vehicle service use, the architecture of the motor vehicle service use, and shows the other potential lots and what could develop on those other potential lots to the south, although at this point, those end users are unknown, and so that's just illustrative. But whatever does develop on those lots would have to follow the pattern book and the uses that would be, that are outlined in the pattern book. The planning commission considered this request at its January the 8th regular meeting, and then voted to recommend the approval of this rezoning request. And Mr. Benny Pandorf, consultant for Huddleston Steel, has a brief presentation that he would like to make. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after our public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Good evening, Mayor, council. Benny Pandorf with Huddleston Steel, representing the developer and owner in Clyde Roundtree Sted. He unfortunately had a death in the family and had to be out of town. So, as Matthew said, this is a zoning of part of the site. It's a nine acre total. We're asking for rezoning for four of the acres from CF to PCD. And again, the reasoning being that the Valvoline, the automotive shop, is not allowed under CF. So the PCD, it's really the only exception we're asking for is for that. So the site is basically bordered by three main roads, Last Cassis, Old Last Cassis, and North Rutherford, as you can see. Pitts Branch runs through it, which is basically a retention pond type of, for storm runoff. Everything that we've done meets all of the future land uses. There's no exceptions in that. Again, here's a site from Ariel. You can see it's really one of the few undeveloped on the whole corner. It's a very popular corner for retail, et cetera. All the major chains are around there as far as fast food, et cetera. So this kind of shows really what's happening. So the corner, which is represented by the yellow, that is where the Valvoline would be. That's the conceptual plan for that. And that is actually considered Phase One of the development. As you can see, to the left is what's remaining of CF, which is the Aldi and the Murphy Oil Gas Station, which, as Mr. Blomley said, has already been pre-approved as part of a master plan for this, for this site. And then the three buildings in, I guess I'll call it red or pink, if you will, those are the speculative future buildings of Phase Two that are also part of the PCD. This is the rendering of the Valvoline. As you can see, it's, architect's done a great job with this. It meets all of the city's aesthetic standards. Worked very closely with the planning team to get it there. Again, this just kind of shows the phasing. Again, the corner, the corner lot is Phase One, which is the Valvoline, and Phase Two is for the remainder of the PCD. Landscape has been a question on this, and we worked very close with Holly again and Brad to show this. The red line that shows the streetscape is a 15-foot wide berm proposed. And then down towards the Phase Two, the yellow strip down there is a, just because of the setbacks, it couldn't be quite as wide. So the actual length of the berm or width of the berm, if you will, is kind of in question of what we could do down there. But one of the purposes of the 15-foot berm and all of the landscaping there is to buffer, I'll go back to the, because of the garage doors that, in this case, have to face a major, you know, a major road, we're trying to, as much as possible, minimize the sightlines to those with the berm and with the landscaping. So that's, that's one of the purposes of the enhanced landscaping, I'll call it, that we worked out with, with the planning team. And then, as Mr. Blomley said, this shows all of the allowable uses for, for the CF. And the exception on the right shows that it's the only exception really we're asking for. Again, is because of the automotive, motor vehicle service usage, the PCD is, that's what we're asking for in the exception for the PCD. And in the middle at the bottom there, the prohibited uses that everyone's agreed to are those four things listed, vape shops, liquor stores, gasoline stations, convenience stores, would never be part of Phase Two on the PCD. Any questions?
Any questions on this rezoning request? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll open this public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 25OZ03.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a double second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll move to item 14, amending the PCD zoning for property along North Rutherford Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next public hearing tonight is for the amendment of the East Side Village Plan Commercial Development located also along North Rutherford Boulevard. This is just to the east of campus. Property is across the street from the Shell Station and Little Strip Center on the west side of North Rutherford. This property is the orange-colored property on the east side, and also backs up to Yearwood Avenue in the unincorporated county. The property totals a little under two acres, and back in 2020, I believe it was, there was a planned development approved on this property for a 11,000-square-foot multi-tenant retail building. And that never came to fruition. The zoning was put in place. I think there was actually even a site plan approved afterwards, but it, but development of it never moved forward. So the developer is now requesting an amendment to the planned development to, instead of having the one multi-tenant building, to have two freestanding food service uses. And both of those food service uses would have drive-throughs, but as SEC will go over in just a moment, neither one of those drive-through uses will have what are affectionately known as squawk boxes, the outdoor speakers. It's, I think, what we've learned is that, is that drive-throughs have evolved over the last few years, and people are using their phones a lot more. This, and, and SEC will go over the site layout in just a moment, but I will say that there is no access proposed onto Yearwood Avenue. Yearwood Avenue remains a county street, a county right-of-way, and back when this was originally proposed back in 2020, the county did not want access onto Yearwood Avenue. And so as a result, the plan, as you'll see, really makes an effort towards buffering the residential uses to the, to the rear of the site, to the east of the site along Yearwood Avenue, and not only buffering it, but keeping some sense of privacy with substantial fencing. Along both the northern and southern property lines of this development, planning commission at its, at its January 8th meeting, at which time they recommended approval, conditioned its approval on the chain-link fencing to go all the way to North Rutherford Boulevard along both the northern and southern boundaries. And the pattern book has been revised to, to make that adjustment. As I mentioned, the planning commission did recommend approval, and we need to conduct a public hearing on this matter tonight, and then vote on first reading. And Mr. Brian Grover with SEC has a brief presentation for you. And sound like a broken record, but I'll be happy to answer questions as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Mayor McFarland, members of the council, I am Brian Grover of SEC. On behalf of CSC Properties and Representative Andrew Smith, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to present this project to you tonight. You may recognize this project. It was previously approved five years to the, or last time you guys saw this was about five years ago to the date. I'll just have a quick recap of the location of the site and the surrounding context before going to more of the details of these proposed changes. The site is located on the east side of North Rutherford Boulevard, north of the East Main Street intersection. You can see in the top left of the slide, that's Greek Rover MTSU, so we're just southeast of the MTSU campus. Context surrounding the site, the northeast and south portions of the site is surrounded by residential, with the western portion across the road primarily being commercial, consisting of the gas station and a commercial center. Looking closer at the site, on the east side is the additional right-of-way of Yearwood Avenue. This does separate the development from residential neighborhood to the east. The site as it exists today does have two homes on it, both of which would be removed upon development of the site. The zoning would not change. This is simply an amendment to the existing zoning with those changes presented before you today. The plan as it is, still follows and complies with the future land use map. Here's some photos of the site as it exists today. This is one of the two homes and the other. This is looking into the site from what would be that commercial area, and this is that commercial center just west of the development. This is a view looking down Yearwood Avenue. The previous, the previous submitted PCD was approximately 10,000-square-foot multi-tenant building with a drive-through. Much of the elements of this PCD has not changed. For example, the actual turn lane into the development, cross-axis easement, as well as pedestrian connections, are still within this project. Two of the major differences for this project is, one, we're going from one lot of records to two lots of records along with two separate buildings. And as Matthew mentioned, the elimination of those speakers. But a majority of the elements on-site have remained the same. The buffers on the north and south side are consistent with the previously approved PCD. The main change for the buffer within the red area is that there's actually additional plant material included within this buffer as compared to the last PCD, while also maintaining that six-foot opaque privacy fence. The architectural characteristics for the site are primarily remaining the same. The only difference is, as stated before, we're have two buildings instead of one. The potential end users for the site is we're looking at, one of them being Dutch Bros, the other one being Chipotle. And here's some examples of that architecture for Dutch Bros. You may be familiar with some of them architecture already, as some of them are being built throughout Murfreesboro. I think one's going up on 96 right now. This is site elevation in the other side, as well as the rear elevation. Lot B, Chipotle. The architectural characteristics are going to be the same for that one as well. There's a lot of consistency with this site, some of the details between the two, making sure that they have the same colors and some patterns to at least some extent, creating that campus-like aesthetic for the entire development. And some examples of the Chipotle architecture, this is facing North Rutherford Boulevard with the site elevations, and then the rear facing Yearwood Avenue. Access to the site remains the same as the previous PCD, coming off of North Rutherford Boulevard with the proposed turn lane. The cross-axis easements running parallel to North Rutherford Boulevard is still being proposed, along with the proposed access easement to Yearwood per planning's request for future, possible future planning development for that area. The formal open space for this site would be utilizing the outdoor dining for these two areas, and here's some examples of what those would possibly look like per lot. When it comes to the exceptions on site, there's two that are primarily design-driven that I want to discuss. The first one in red being the reduction of plant material for those buffers. That request is coming simply because there will at some point be continuation of that access easement to the neighboring properties, and rather than have those buffers there to be ripped out later, to simply just have that there. And the other primary exception request is, is you see that black line down the middle, the accessory structures are requesting a reduction of their setback from five feet to zero. This is to promote and help keep those solid waste enclosures as far away as Yearwood Avenue as possible, and putting them, and pulling them further into the site. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those now or after the public hearing.
Any questions? All right. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 25OZ04.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion of second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right. We'll move to item 15, rezoning property along East Castle Street. And thank y'all for all coming out tonight. Somebody's got to speak at some point, right?
All right. Mayor McFarland, our last public hearing tonight is for First Baptist Church, located along East Castle Street. They're requesting to rezone all of their properties. It's a total of nine parcels to PND, Planned Institutional Development, with the CCO overlay district, city core overlay district, to remain on the property. All nine parcels are currently zoned RS8 and CCO. So, and kind of a little bit of the nuance to why they are having to request the rezoning to a planned development. Our zoning ordinance states that on a piece of property, a principal use can, our parking lot cannot be a principal use. And so because their proposed parking lot expansion on the north side of East Castle Street would be a standalone parking lot, it would not be permissible under the zoning ordinance. But I think that as staff, you know, we see the value in what the church is proposing to do here, and help their, help manage their, their traffic, help manage the on-street parking. And then also with this being a more urban setting, a more urban walkable setting, where this is kind of filling in downtown as opposed to greenfield development somewhere on the fringes of the city, where it's kind of more of a blank slate. So, so we, at staff, as being supportive of the, of the request, recommended that in order for them to, in order for the standalone parking lot to be permitted, that they rezone it as a planned institutional development. So the layout is included in the pattern book. We recommended that they just go ahead and, and package all of their property, including where the existing church building where the existing church building is located, into the planned development. That takes it out of the special use permit process if they ever want to, to build an addition or a new church building on the south side. That would, that would mean that they would amend their special use permit as opposed to, or excuse me, amend their zoning as opposed to go into the Board of Zoning Appeals. We conducted a neighborhood meeting on this in, in the fall, and it was well-attended, and there was a lot of good discussion at that neighborhood meeting, and then the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on January the 8th and recommended its approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and Mr. Brian Grover from SEC has a brief presentation that he would like to go over as well.
What's the total spaces?
Let's see. Brian, do you know that off the top of your head?
I believe it's 205.
So I think he's, he's saying just a little over 200, about 205 spaces.
Brian.
Good evening again. I am Brian Grover of SEC. Just want to say, on behalf of First Baptist Church and Representative Warren Russell, thank you for the opportunity to present our project to you for this rezoning. First Baptist Church, which is to rezone approximately nine lots located near the intersection of South Birble Avenue and East Castle Street. Get this thing going. As you can see here, the existing campus is on the southwest corner of that intersection with the proposed area for the parking lots on the northwest corner. The zoning as it sits today is RS8, and it would be rezoned to the Planned Institutional District. With the future land use map, everything that we're proposing with this is in compliance with that future land use map as well. Some existing photos of the site today. This is looking on East Castle Street. This used to be a beauty or, beauty or salon shop that used to exist there. This is the existing parking lot across the church they're using today, as well as the main campus. The next few photos here are of the existing homes along South Birble Avenue. All of these homes are currently owned by the church and would be demolished upon development. The church has recognized throughout the years as their congregations continue to grow and their services increase, congestion within the area for traffic. In order to help resolve this issue, they have come together and acquired these properties with the intent of building a parking lot to pull those vehicles off of the roads and into this area to create a less congested area and safer passage for emergency vehicles during times of service. The parking lots combined are approximately just over two and a quarter acres. Lot B would be a future phase with Lot A being the primary focus in the immediate future. There is approximately 105 proposed spaces with 46 existing spaces in the church campus. The three main aspects when it comes to the design of this PND that were looked at were lighting, screening, and buffers, as well as sidewalk connections. When it comes to the lighting, the maximum amount of height any fixture could have in the site would be 16 feet. This is consistent with the residential restrictions that are typically applied for lighting as well. When it comes to the access and pedestrian access to the site, when it, the vehicular access points, there's four of them in total, two on South Birble and two of them along East Castle Street. An opportunity the church saw to give back to the community was when this would be developed, sidewalks would be built along these two main roadways, but they also wanted to provide a pedestrian walkway with, internal to the parking lot as well, creating essentially a circuit that would be open to the community. When it comes to the buffers and screening onsite, this is something we worked very close with staff to ensure that the parking lots were going to have a, their impact would be as mitigated as much as possible while not jeopardizing the safety of the area. So, there's a total of three different types of sections being proposed for this. The first one, as you can see here in blue, and here's an example of what that typical cross-section would be, essentially a type D buffer with a six-foot fence. The green areas, as seen in this section, is once again that same buffer type, but utilizing a four-foot fence to make sure that visibility is increased for those areas. And lastly, this portion here, using a four-foot fence and screening shrubs to once again increase that visibility. The exceptions for this PND are minimal in number, without a doubt. Two of them were simply written and coordinating with staff to create those typical cross-sections for those areas, following, and the idea was to follow the accepted, the crime prevention through environmental design, to use that to create safety for this. The primary exception being requested is, as Matthew stated, that the sole use for these lots would be parking. If you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those now or after the hearing.
Any questions?
I would say Pastor McCarron invited me out, and we had a great conversation on, you know, the need and what's, what's happening in the congregation to be able to handle parking, some of the dangers of having shuttles and golf carts running and on narrow streets and people parking on the streets. There's a lot of good that comes with what's being proposed, and it, it seems like this is a very reasonable request to be able to alleviate some of the things that we're seeing downtown, and, you know, as our downtown organizations like your church is growing, we need to find better ways to be able to help that. So, councilmembers, y'all have anything before we have the public hearing?
No, I, I agree. I spoke majorly in favor of it at Planning Commission. I think it's a needed addition.
I think it's the right thing to do. I would just hope they would dedicate a space to Madeline Scales-Harris, who always have parking on Sundays.
All right. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium, and we'll open the public hearing.
Mayor and council, good evening. My name is James McCarron. I have the privilege of serving as a senior pastor at First Baptist Church. For the last 100, over 170 years, we've served the Murfreesboro community. For the last 15 of those years, we've had parking issues. We've seen cars be at every, within a four-block radius of our church on every single street. And the concerns with that were several. First is that we had families walking in the middle of streets because there are no sidewalks in that area placing themselves at risk. The second was when you have narrow streets and people parking on either side of the street, it prohibits the flow of traffic. And then the third is expenses, because as there are minimal spaces, we have to incur other expenses to make sure people are able to get safely to the building. This project, as you mentioned, is our way of trying to not only meet a need for our church, but also for our community, to make sure that we retain, we return that flow of traffic back to our community. So if at any point during one of our services, there is an emergency, that there's no challenge or prohibition for, or, no, no challenge for any emergency vehicles to go down the streets. And so I want to thank you guys for considering this, and it's our prayer that you vote favorably. God bless you, and we will make sure Madeline gets a parking space.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I want to thank everyone for coming out, and is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Ooh, beat y'all.
First and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right. Pastor McCarron, do I get a parking spot too?
Tell him no.
I'm just asking. Forget it. Donation.
Donation. I'm very thankful that y'all came out, but I do want to say this, thank you for what you do in our community, but y'all are welcome to stay for the next six or eight items that we have, but I promise it's all pretty boring stuff, so if y'all want to go, you're welcome to go.
Yeah, they said bye.
Thank y'all. You've got the purchase of a service truck.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Fleet Services has a motion to purchase a medium-duty service truck from Wilson County Motors. The fleet staff recommends approval of this contract. As the city continues to grow, we have seen an increase in the number of road calls and onsite work requests. This vehicle will be better outfitted for the types of work we provide while out of the shop. This will allow Fleet Services to perform more efficient and safe work while in the field. This purchase expense of $132,196 is funded from the other capital sources fund. If there are any questions, I'm here to take the answer. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Valerie, should have asked this, because I'm old enough to remember Calgon, take me away. Is this Calgon?
It's a little different.
Okay, but it is Calgon? Is that how you say it?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how you say it.
All right. Calgon Carbon Corporation Contract for Granular Activated Carbon Resources.
Say that three times fast. Yeah, that's impossible without getting tongue-tied. Thank you for considering these items tonight. The first that we have is for our water treatment plant. In fact, both the first and second item are for the water treatment plant. The first is to consider a contract for granular activated carbon to be used at the water plant, which helps to treat our water and remove byproducts, taste and odor, personal care products, that type thing. The plant has four basins or contactors, and we replace the carbon in each of those one, one per year. And we, along with the purchasing department, accepted bids for the replacement of one of the contactors. There were two, two bids, and Calgon Carbon Corporation was the low bidder in the, with $2.18 per pound, and we recommend awarding the contract to them in the amount of $165,680.
Is this an unusual circumstance? Because I notice you've got that in the wording, is that you'll replace one per year unless unusual circumstances exist?
Well, I think is...
Is this a normal replacement, I guess?
It is. It is. We budget for one per year, and I guess that unusual circumstance would be if the, if it's not available or difficult to find, but we would, or if there was some type of fowling in that, another basin, we might replace two in a year, but we try to do one per year, just to kind of spread it out.
Any questions?
So moved.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to item 18, SSR Task Order Emerging Contaminant GAC Pilot.
Yes, so we would like to consider a professional services task order with Smith-Sekman-Reed to do a pilot study on the granular activated carb, carbon, we, we call it GAC, and ion exchange, and their effectiveness in removing certain contaminants. In 2029, EPA will start regulating six substances, and I may not pronounce these correctly, but per and polyfluoralkyl, alkyl substances. And the study will be for 12 months. It is to determine how effective these different carbons and ion exchange products will remove these contaminants, and the task order is in the amount of $235,541. We will get a report at the end of the 12 months. That will include data analysis, cost estimates, and a final report for kind of a model development.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Request approval.
So the emerging contaminants is something that's coming in 2029?
Well, the regulation of those contaminants.
Of those contaminants?
Yes. Those contaminants are currently in our water, but EPA is starting to regulate those contaminants in 2029. So there, some of those contaminants are being added to the list that we have to test for.
Okay. The, the rule, the, the rule of the EPA regulation was adopted in 2024, but it's not a mandatory standard until 2029.
2029, okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to Old Fort Parking Renovations Stormwater Participation.
Yes, so we want to consider participating, using stormwater funds as an upgrade to the cost to permeable paver system rather than regular asphalt paving. Bids were received for the project, and the city has an informal participation guidance, and some of the project examples that we use to determine if a project qualifies for stormwater funding is stream restorations and stormwater control retrofits, and this project would be considered a retrofit. As the next slide, you can see kind of the new parking area from the old parking area, and comparisons were used, cost comparisons were used, using bid prices from different projects and, as well as the city's paving contract. The total parking improvements with the pavers was $733,082. The city fund would have funded asphalt paving in the amount of $359,502, so that's what the city would participate. And then from the stormwater fund, we would, the difference in that would be $373,0580 as a participation amount from the stormwater funds. And we recommend a mo, approval of participation in that amount.
Any questions for Ms. Smith?
Well, if you recommend it, I'll move for approval. Okay?
Good.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Ms. Averwater.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, and as we continue on the Murfreesboro Water Resources Department Council Meeting, we'll move to item 20, the WRF Wet Weather Upgrades.
Hey, no PowerPoints, though.
Yep.
Well, there's kind of been one. That was short.
Sure, we need more transitions.
I'll need Darren to help with that, if you want transition. The next two items are regarding our WRF Water Resource Recovery Facility. The first is a task order amendment request from Smith-Sekman-Reed. They, the original task order was to study the filters, the UV equipment, which is kind of on the north end of the site where I've labeled it filters, I'm not sure if you can see it very well, but, and then an assessment of the old Headworks Building that is currently not in service, which is at the south end of the site. They have expended more effort than anticipated studying the existing filters and recommissioning of the old Headworks Building, as well as answering questions. They had a lot of questions on process at the plant and how to, you know, construct the new facilities and keep the plant in operation, and so SSR had to work with the
the new facilities and keep the plant in operation. And so SSR had to work with the contractors during the bidding process and expended quite a bit more money than they anticipated. So the original task order was in the amount of $693,000. The amendment that they're requesting is $56,340 for a grand total of $749,340. And we recommend approval.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 21, the WRF Wet Weather Upgrades TTL Task Order for Geotech Services.
Yes. So I should have said that the wet weather project has already been, bid. The contractor expects to mobilize in March. It's the same contractor that's doing the bio-solage dryer project. And with the construction of the wet weather upgrades, as required by International Building Code, we need a geotechnical company to do masonry testing, steel inspections, foundation and load tests, and compaction testing. And we have requested TTL to give us a proposal for that work. And they're, the wet weather construction project's in the amount of 7.1 million, and TTL has given us a task order proposal in the amount of $89,108. And we request approval.
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, thank you, Valerie. All right, we'll move to board and commission appointments, which I don't think we have any.
I don't believe so.
All right, any beer permits?
We have one tonight for an ownership change for a gas station located at 1630 Bradyville Pike. The applicant's met our requirements, and we recommend for approval pending final building and codes inspections.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Ms. Mayor Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
All right, I think we have, Sam, you've got an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and members of council, just tonight, again, thank you, Mayor, for mentioning the special census at the start of the meeting, and I'd like to remind any of our viewing audience that we're still, just remind you of that website, it's www.murfreesboro census.com. We will be holding a second drawing for a hundred dollar gift card, or a third drawing for a hundred dollar gift card on February the 14th. And if you sign up online, you'll be entered into that drawing. With that, we're starting our door-to-door campaigning with the fire department, and we'll kick that off this weekend under Census Saturday. We're partnering with five churches in the downtown area, our fire department, and a couple of other city staff members to hit some under responding streets in the downtown area. And then our fire department will be working with their general, normal shift and in, and around their fire stations with some lists that we'll provide on non-responding streets and addresses to help us move that forward. Mayor, and then also wanted to remind you and announce to the public that we will be conducting a town hall meeting this Tuesday, February the 11th, at 6:00 at Olive Branch Church for the Patterson Park, Bradyville Pike area. The Olive Branch Church is located at 1115 Minerva Drive. We'll cover generally parks, road and transportation projects, real-time crime center, and public safety. And then we'll also have a time for questions and answers, and we invite those in the community in that, especially in that area, to join us for that town hall meeting. And that's what I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Sam. Any other business from staff? Any other business from council?
Mr. Mayor, do you want to let everybody know out there watching the great job that the finance team did?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I think that's a, let me pull up the email here that I don't want to miss anything that-
I did this summer, but I haven't emailed it over to you yet, sorry.
That's okay. So, our finance department, we just got our audit back and had another clean audit, no findings.
No findings, yeah.
Also, well, that'll be presented here at some point where our, the auditor will come, but talk about fund balance, but the audit report had no findings. Successful property tax season with over 90% of the taxes collected. Payroll has successfully implemented two mid-year pay raises and two significant payroll benefit policy changes, where the council approved five PTO days and updated on call policies. The accounts payable department processed a total of 28,543 invoices and cut 16,682 checks or ACH payments. The newly formed city clerk division transitioned to new online public records request portal, which has been really successful, and they finalized the implementation of electronic contracts module. They did all of this and had no turnover in the department. So they're continuing to cross-train through the department and planning the next software implementation to allow for increased automation of grants and CIP budgeting, contracting, and spending. So, great job by them.
Great job.
And I know we have emergency service providers that provide great service under very stressful conditions, but there is no stressful condition like people coming in over Christmas holiday and paying their property taxes. So, our team handles that with grace and, and a lot of stress, and we're very thankful for the work that they do.
They do. They've done a fantastic job. There've been a lot of changes the last year, but they've done wonderfully. Couldn't have asked for a better team.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business? Thanks for reminding, Austin. That's, don't want to miss that. Darren, we have a workshop next week on Thursday?
Yes, sir, February 13th, next Thursday.
And we will not be meeting on the 20th?
Correct. Meeting on, again, on the 27th. Anticipate it, on the 27th.
All right, well, if, for those of y'all who don't watch, next Thursday, we'll go ahead from the council chambers and wish y'all a very happy Valentine's Day. Don't forget about your gifts that you're supposed to get. All right, we'll stand adjourned.